All night long.
We have bits and pieces of it.
Mr. Vice Chair, it is six o'clock.
We are live.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Tuesday, January the 12th City Council Meeting. I now call this meeting to order. Our pledge of allegiance and invocation tonight will be from Councilman Anthony Byrd.
Thank you. Can we have a flag, please?
I'm working on it. Sorry, my screen's a little jumbled up. One second. All right.
Thank you so much. Okay, everyone, you ready? Our pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which this stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Will we please bow our heads? Heavenly Father, thank you once again for bringing us together on this beautiful, beautiful day that you made. With the world going through the things that we are seeing on television, seeing in our homes and just seeing abroad upons the streets. We are very scared and nervous about what tomorrow will look like, but we do understand that your will will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And we trust that will. And we thank you for everything that you have bestowed upon us and the love that you have spread through the world and through our families. And that gives us hope that tomorrow will be a better day. And I thank you. I love you. And I appreciate all the things that you have brung into our lives. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, that's the bird. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman.
Need a little love in this world. Yeah.
Yeah.
We have no special presentations this afternoon. Could I get a motion on the minutes, please?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes as recorded with a proper second questions or concerns before we vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This one my first. Yes. Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries. We now move into your order of business for your city council. Ordinance is final reading this afternoon. We do have a couple economic community development. Item five A, please, ma'am.
An ordinance amending Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Twenty-One, Division Four, Sections Twenty-One, One Thirty-Six and Twenty-One, One Thirty-Seven, related to overgrowth and abatement.
Councilman Ledford, followed by Councilwoman Byrd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, I appreciate the council support and I would like to move for final approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second questions or comments before we vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Oglesby.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries nine zero. The next item, please, ma'am, five B.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone two properties located in the one hundred block of Bush Street from R one residential zone to E R eight two urban edge residential attached to stores, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This being in your district and with no objection, I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second questions or comments before we vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yeah.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
So moved. We now move into our planning items ordinances on first reading. We have several this afternoon. Madam Clerk, would you read six A, please?
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to lift conditions from ordinance number one, three, 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 seven, a previous case number two thousand eighteen, one oh six, on the property located at six twelve Snow Street, more particularly described herein.
Would the applicant for this item please raise their hand at this time? Very well. Is there any opposition that would like to voice at this time? Would you please raise your hand? Any opposition? All right, counsel, I am seeing no opposition to this item. Counselman Ledford.
Chairman, I'd like to defer to Councilman, Vice Chairman Smith.
Vice Chair.
Sir, I am, I thought I was looking, I'm sorry, I was looking for a name sort of of some people that had signed up at the same time. I was going through this particular item. All right, sir, I see no opposition. I do see the applicant is here. Mr. Chairman, this isn't your district. So if you have no.
This one's in yours, Vice Chairman, I think.
No, Nicholas Hughes, right?
Yes, this is District One.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah, this is District One. Mr. Chairman, if you have, if you're okay with it, I'd like to move approval.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? Madam Clerk, please.
Councilwoman Oglesby.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries nine zero. Madam Clerk, if you would, please read item six B, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located in the six seven hundred block of Hickson Pike from R one residential zone to C two convenience commercial zone.
Is the applicant present this afternoon? Would you please raise your hand? Is there any attendees in opposition to this request? Would you please raise your hand at this time? Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have had no opposition raised on this case, so I would like to move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve with a proper second questions or comments before we vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
So moved. All right, Madam Clerk, if you would, please, six C.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone properties located in the seven thousand block of Shallowford Road and twenty-three oh one Rivendell Lane for R one residential zone and RTZ residential townhouse zero lot lines on to RTZ residential townhouse zero lot lines on for the entire site.
All right, would the applicant please raise your hand at this time? I'm seeing no hand. Is there any one in attendance this afternoon in opposition? Would you please raise your hand at this time? Counselman Ledford, I am seeing a couple of hands in opposition, sir. Would you like to have a presentation?
Actually, sir, I'd like to make the deferral again as we're still working through some complicated issues on several fronts. I'd mentioned that in agenda session. I'd like to move this to our March eighth Planning and Zoning Committee.
Okay, very well. Is that in the form of a motion, sir?
That is in the form of a motion, sir.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to defer until March the eighth with a proper second questions or comments before we vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Oglesby.
Yeah.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries to defer until March the eighth. Madam Clerk, six D, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone properties located at forty-one fifty, four to two hundred and forty-two sixteen Roundoff Circle from R one residential zone and R two residential zone to R three residential zone.
Is the applicant for this request present this afternoon? Would you please raise your hand? Is there anyone in attendance in opposition to this request? Would you raise your hand? Counselman Gilbert, I'm not seeing opposition nor the applicant. Sir, you have the floor.
I defer this to the nineteenth.
Second.
Very well. We have a motion on the floor to defer until March the nineteenth. Is that correct, sir?
January.
January nineteenth. My bad. Deferal till January the nineteenth. And we had a second on that motion as well. Questions or comments before we vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion to defer carries nine zero. Six E, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at sixty-six twenty-six Shallowford Road from R one residential zone to O one office zone, subject to certain conditions.
Madam, or Councilwoman Byrd, before I ask for the applicant, are you planning on deferring this one?
Yes.
Would you like the floor?
Yes, I would. I move to defer till January nineteenth.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to defer until January the nineteenth with a proper second questions or comments before we vote. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Oglesby.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion to defer till January the nineteenth carries. Madam Clerk, if you would, please now read six F, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at sixteen thirty-nine Roswell Avenue from U I N three urban industrial three story zone to U C X three urban commercial mixed use three story zone.
Is the applicant in attendance this afternoon for this request? Would you please raise your hand? Very good. Is there any in attendance in opposition to this request this afternoon? Would you please raise your hand? All right, Councilman Oglesby, I'm seeing the applicant, but at this time, no opposition. Sir, you have the floor.
Well, the applicant, I'm good with this project unless it's something he got to say. I want to move to approve.
I don't think he wants to talk himself out of that, sir. We have a motion. We have a motion to approve with a proper second questions or comments before we vote. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
So moved. Six G, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at five oh five Riverfront Parkway from M one manufacturing zone to C three central business zone, subject to certain conditions.
Is the applicant for this request in attendance this afternoon? Would you raise your hand? Very well. Is there any opposition to this request tonight? Would you please raise your hand? All right, Councilman Oglesby, I'm seeing the applicant, but no opposition, sir.
Okay, I just got to, if, uh, talk to John for a second. There's three versions here. I want to make sure we get the correct one into record, so I just need for John to give me what was the final recommendation.
Okay, Vice Chair Smith, would you bring Mr. Bridger in, please?
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Bridger. I thought was going to make it through this planning agenda without you.
I'm sorry y'all stuck with me for a few minutes.
Councilman Oglesby.
Just a quick synopsis. The one is the Planning Commission version is the one. And there was, there's a tweak to that condition relating to dumpsters. It says that all dumpsters mechanical equipment shall be screened from all public rights away. And I think the prior staff version had like, had to be in the rear. This, that applicant had requested that modification, which Planning Commission agreed to. So that's just, no, that's the change. So you'd be adopting the Planning Commission version, which is the first item on that list of your agenda items.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bridge. I just wanted to confirm that because we had talked some about that in committee last week. So with no opposition and with no objections from the applicant, I move to approve.
Second.
Very well, we have a motion to approve with a proper second questions or comments before we vote. All right, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Oglesby.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman effort.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries nine zero to approve. John, you might as well hang around for this last planning item. Madam Clerk, six H, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at thirty-one oh four North Hickory Street from M one manufacturing zone to O one office zone.
All right, is the applicant in attendance this afternoon for this request? Would you please raise your hand? Very good. Is there anyone in attendance this afternoon in opposition? Would you please raise your hand at this time? Okay, Councilman Byrd, where'd you go? There you go.
Here I am, sir.
All right, Councilman Byrd, you, your applicant is here. I see no one in opposition this afternoon.
Yes, sir, and I talked to the people over in Riverside Drive and I haven't had any, uh, objection. Yes, I'm sorry, to this request. So with that, I move to approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
So moved. Mr. Bridger, thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Chair, you can excuse our guest.
Boom. He's excused.
All right, we now move into our resolutions under economic and community development. Madam Clerk, would you please read seven A through seven E if there are no objections from the council? Hold on, Councilman Gilbert.
No, I'll go approve when you get through reading it.
All right, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, A through E, please.
Yes. Item A, a resolution authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into a first agreement to exercise option to renew with Cromwell Development One LLC and substantially the form attached for an additional term of one year for the use of the Janazium at Cromwell Hills Apartments to operate programs for youth, young adults and families on the property located at thirty-nine forty Camellia Drive. Item B, a resolution authorizing the mayor his designated in securing multi-year license agreement and substantially the form attached with fifty plus Racing Foundation Inc. for the Chattanooga Motor Car Festival beginning October one, twenty twenty-one, with option to renew each year for up to two additional one-year terms in the October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Item C, a resolution authorizing the mayor his designated entering to a nonprofit lease standard form agreement with Eastlake Neighborhood Association, Inc., in substantially the form attached for the occupancy and operation of a concession stand for the benefit of the community with an address of three thousand east thirty-fourth street, thirty-fourth street on a portion of tax parcel number one six eight B U zero one eight for a term of four years and one dollar per year. Item D, a resolution authorizing the mayor his designated to enter into a nonprofit lease standard form agreement with Eastlake Neighborhood Association, Inc. and substantially the form attached for the occupancy of the community building on a portion of tax parcel number one six eight B U zero one eight with an address of three thousand, three thousand east thirty-fourth street and to authorize the waiver of the Eastlake Park at the lake event fees in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents per event for a total amount of nine hundred and ten dollars for the four annual events held by the Eastlake Neighborhood Association for the benefit of the Eastlake community for a term of four years at one dollars per year. And item E, a resolution authorizing the mayor his designated entering to a first agreement to exercise option to renew with the Chattanooga Housing Authority and substantially the form attached for an additional term, additional term of one year for the use of the Sheila Jennings Wellness Center to operate programs for youth, young adults and families on the property located in twelve oh one Popular Street.
Councilman Gilbert, followed by Councilman Oglesby.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor to approve items A through E with a proper second questions or comments before we vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion to approve items A through E carries nine zero. Now, with no objections from the council, Madam Clerk, would you read F, G, and H together as a package, please?
Yes. Item F, a resolution to amend resolution number three oh five six seven so as to make payment to governmentjobs.com DBA NeoGov for a service and licensing agreement to provide human resources, software services for onboard and performance management services as well as the current recruitment and applicant tracking services for renewal term of twelve months with a corrected amount of seventy-four thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Item G, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Tal Dickerson as a special police officer on honor for the Land Development Office of the Department of Economic and Community Development to do especially due to as prescribed herein, subject to certain conditions. Item H, a resolution authorizing office of the city attorney to increase funds for blanket contract five three six three seven zero with Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, Inc. for twenty twenty-one personal and property insurance coverage, total insured value of six hundred thousand, six hundred million, seven hundred, six thousand, three hundred, six nine dollars for an amount not to exceed six hundred sixty-one. In my document, it's sixty-one, sixty-one million, is that correct?
No, ma'am, it's six hundred million, but six hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilman Gilbert.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve items G, uh, F, G, and H with a proper second questions or comments before we vote. Mr. Councilman Gilbert, is that an old hand, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very well. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Oglesby.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion to approve items F, G, and H carries nine zero. Now, Madam Clerk, if you would, please read seven I.
Resolution approving a special exceptions permit for an existing liquor store changing ownership located at nine eleven Dotson Avenue.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second questions or comments before we vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Nine.
I didn't hear your.
Obstain, abstain.
Yes. That is eight yeses.
Motion carries with eight yeses. All right, Madam Clerk, we now move to items in Public Works and Transportation with no objection from the council. Would you please read item seven J through seven N, please? J through N.
Item J, a resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Public Works, so we're contract number R two zero zero one seven two one zero Summit of Softball Complex Improvements from the Easter Tornado twenty twenty, state structures replacement to Lanier Plans, Inc., Plans, Inc. DBA Corcat of Carlton, Georgia, in the amount of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents with contingency amount of forty-nine hundred dollars for an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Item K, a resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Public Works, so we're contract number R two zero zero one seven two zero eight Summit of Softball Complex Improvements from the Easter Tornado twenty twenty fencing replacement to Factory to You Fence of Knox, Inc. of Knoxville, Tennessee, in the amount of one hundred, twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars with a contingency amount of twelve thousand dollars for an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Item L, a resolution authorizing the renewal of contract number E one eight zero zero seven one zero one on call blanket contracts for the Architectural Services Resolution two nine seven oh three with one Allen and Hostel, Inc., two Artic Design Group, Inc., three, Derthic, Henley, and Wilkerson Architects, P O L C, four Franklin Architects, fire Raridan, and Carroll Architects, Inc. and six MBI Companies, Inc., formerly T W H Architects, Inc. for year three of a four-year term with, with these six professional firms estimated at one million, five hundred thousand dollars total annually for use by all departments. Item M, a resolution authorizing the renewal contract number E one eight zero zero eight one zero one on call blanket contracts for structural engineering services, Resolution two nine seven oh four with one Allen and Hostel, Inc., two Albert Venetian Company, three C T I Engineers, Inc., four Estes Russell Engineering, Inc., five Integrated Structural Services, Inc., six March Adams and Associates, Inc., and seven Volker, Inc. for year three of a four-year term with these seven professional firms estimated at three hundred thousand dollars total annually for use by all departments. And item N, a resolution authorizing renewal contract number E one eight zero zero nine one oh one on call blanket contracts for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering services, Resolution two nine seven oh two with one Camelin Associates, Inc. and two March Adams and Associates, Inc. for year three of a four-year term with these two professional firms estimated at three hundred thousand dollars total annually for use by all departments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Ledford, followed by Councilman Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to extend my gratitude once again for the hard work that the Public Works Department is doing, helping to restore and rebuild from the Easter Tornado. This is part of a multi-tiered contract, I know, to help the Summit Complex, and I know there are more coming, and this council continues to work hard. The city continues to work hard to help us recover from the tornado, and I greatly appreciate it. Before I make a motion, I'd like to defer to our Public Works Chairman if he'd like to make the motion.
Thank you. Good luck, you back.
All right, I'd like to move to approve then.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second for items seven J through N. Questions or comments before we vote? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Oglesby.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Ledford.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Yes.
Councilman Byrd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Henderson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion to approve items J through N approves. Motion carries nine zero. All right, counsel, if you would, at this time, pull up your. What, uh, council, if you would, at this time, pull up your purchases for this afternoon while Mr. Vice Chair brings in Tony Salmon, please. Good evening, Mr. Salmon.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of council. We have a few purchases this evening for your approval and one emergency purchase to bring to your attention. First, starting with the Department of Economic and Community Development, we have a request to increase grant funding of a purchase approved by council previously. It was on non-congregate winter shelter, Part A, for a hundred and forty three thousand dollars. The request is to increase this item to three hundred thousand dollars. The first part of that, Part A, already awarded to J D H developers, and the second part is for Part B for security services. Security services are being awarded to Security Engineers Incorporated. The total combined parts, Part A for hotel and Part B for security, for a total amount of three hundred thousand dollars. The next item, the next three items are from our Fleet Division of Public Works. The first item, and all three of these items are requests to extend the existing blanket until new contracts have been secured. The first item is for service repairs for medium and heavy-duty vehicles being awarded to Chattanooga Truck Center for thirty thousand dollars. The next item, also for service repairs for medium and heavy-duty vehicles, to Lee Smith Incorporated for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And the last item for automotive parts and accessories to Lee Smith Incorporated for two million, six hundred thousand dollars. And that concludes the purchases for this evening.
Thank you, sir. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve tonight's purchases with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilman Bird?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Leffert?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That is eight yeses.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. We have one emergency purchase. Purchase item under the mayor's emergency declaration. It is also from Public Works in the Fleet Division for truck service repairs. The supplier is Tennessee Kenworth. Purchase order number is five six zero zero six two for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for emergency service repairs and outside parts on all medium and heavy-duty trucks. This will allow our Fleet Division to manage the staffing shortage that has been caused by the COVID nineteen pandemic. And that concludes the emergency purchases.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Mr. Vice Chair, you can excuse our guest. We now move into other business. We do have three items listed there this afternoon. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to take the first one, sir?
Yes, sir. Um, you have approved a special exceptions permit for this location tonight in your, uh, resolutions. This is a certificate of background investigation for BF M Z LLC, DBA Neighborhood Liquors at nine eleven Dotson Avenue. We have provided a copy of this sheet to Nicole so that she would have it available, and we need to have, uh, signatures of at least five members of the council per your ordinance. This, uh, document certifies that this applicant complies with all the requirements of the city code.
Madam Clerk, would you make sure and email, uh, each council person for their approval?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, under other business is board appointments. Uh, Vice Chair Smith.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to reappoint Derek Markey to the Board of Sign Appeals. And I would also like to reappoint Joe Manuel to the Board of Zoning Appeals, sir.
All right, sir. Is that it?
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Oglesby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to reappoint Dr. Juanita Laumann Clay, affectionately known as Dr. J, to the Youth and Family Development Board.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Is that it?
That's it, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to reappoint Barry Snyder to the Board of Sign Appeals and Alan Richelson to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to reappoint Jackie Thomas to the Zoning Appeal Board, and I'd also like to appoint or nominate, uh, Kanika Wellington Jones to the Park Board.
Okay, that is in the form of a motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have, uh, a motion on the floor with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Leffert?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Bird?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you.
Councilwoman. All right, Mr. Attorney, it looks like we have a donation this afternoon that we need to be made aware of.
Yes, sir. The Police Department has informed me that they have received a donation, uh, from Dr. Jeffrey Visser and D A Visser here of ten thousand dollars, and I told them that at least they needed to present that to this body to at least that you could congratulate them, uh, for providing that to, uh, police.
Thank you, sir. We, uh, truly appreciate the Visser's stepping up and making this donation, uh, as very generous to the Police Department.
Yes.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
All right, that concludes other business this afternoon. Uh, we now move to committee reports. I will take them as I see them on my screen. Councilwoman Burris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Budget and Finance did meet today. We received a, uh, review of the public meeting report from administration relative to budget, and we also scheduled a special, uh, strategic planning meeting on January twenty sixth from one to three thirty to get council input on the budget process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Ledford?
No report, Chairman.
Councilman Oglesby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we had an Economic and Community Development Committee meeting, which really was great, uh, with the, uh, Vinceno Group and the AIM Center about the residential project located, uh, in District Eight. And I want to thank, uh, Councilman Bird for his leadership and all he put into to make this project happen. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Gilbert?
No report.
Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have a Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting, and we will have another one in two weeks. And part of that meeting will be a report from Public Works on the consent decree. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next week, January nineteenth, immediately following the agenda session, we will have a legislative committee to discuss the panhandling ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, YFD will have a committee meeting on, uh, January the twenty sixth, and also we're still in the business of helping people get their rent paid and utilities. So if you need help, please call four two three six four three six four three four. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Bird?
Thank you, Chair. Public Safety will have a meeting on, also on January the sixth, where we will get our quarterly report from Park. Look forward to that meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
Check that date.
You said January twenty sixth?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that now brings us to persons wishing to address the council. So if you are in attendance, uh, tonight, and you have registered to speak, would you please raise your hand at this time? Mr. Vice Chair, would you please confirm the two hands that we have raised, that they are registered to speak this afternoon?
Mr. Corley has not registered to speak, sir, but it looks like, um, Wellington Jones has.
Okay, very well. Would you, uh, bring in, uh, Ms. Or?
No, she disappeared.
She disappeared, all us.
Would you still like her to?
Well, she's back.
There she is.
Hello?
Good af, good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, oh, hold on one second. I forgot one bit of process that we need to go through. I'd like to ask our attorney to read our move for engagement. And while he's doing that, the Vice Chair will put the clock up on the screen, please.
Uh, Ms. Wellington Jones, you are, uh, just recently, I think, have been appointed here tonight, but, uh, thank you and congratulations to that. But, uh, at the end of each council business meeting here, since we're on Zoom like this, uh, each speaker wishing to address the council uh, is supposed to be recognized, uh, by providing their name, address, and council district. You don't get more than three minutes to speak, and you can address the council only upon matters within their legislative and quasi judicial authority and not upon matters that are under other governmental bodies or agencies authority. And don't use any vulgar obscene language nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others and address the council as a whole while you're talking. But thank you, ma'am.
And Mr. Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, would you put the three-minute clock up, please? And soon as he does that, Ms. Jones, uh, give us your, uh, district, and you may begin as soon as the clock appears. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, District Nine, uh, again, Kanika Wellington Jones, twenty four zero seven East Fish Street. I just wanted to come on and just say thank you to the council, and a special thank you to, uh, Councilwoman Coonrod for this opportunity. Um, I cannot wait to join the, the team and to use my expertise to add value to the Police Advisory Board. So again, thank you, uh, and I'm excited.
Thank you for volunteering, and we, we certainly appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, is that it? All right, I am seeing no other hands at this time. Councilman Gilbert, you had a hand up, sir.
Yeah, I was going, uh, I think we said earlier before you came that we're gonna have a disparity study at, in the uh, Vice Chairman Committee next week.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, earlier today, we did, hang on, let me remove this since we have no more speakers. Okay, there you go. Uh, yes, Councilman, we did discuss, uh, a piece of legislation that Councilman Gilbert and Councilwoman Coonrod uh, want to consider for the, uh, based on the disparity study, and I told them or instructed them, I'm more than happy to have that legislative committee, uh, next week. I forgot that was not on my list, so thank you, sir, for bringing that up.
Okay, very well. Thank you, sir. Okay, council, I am not seeing any other hands. What is the pleasure of the council at this time?
Move adjourn.
So moved. We are adjourned. See you.